The ARBing seven o'clock on May 4th. This is the meeting of the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee. I'm Counselor Jack Echols, the Chair. Joining me are Vice Chair Counselor Jamaladeen and Voting Members Counselor McMaster, Counselor Migliorelli, and President Gregoritis. And Non-Voting Members Counselor Tremontosi, Counselor Thomas, and Counselor Sannella. This provides notice of quorum for the record. Due into Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will post audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Melrose website and MMTV3.org. Public comment is also always encouraged by emailing citycouncil@cityofmelrose.org. At this time, I would look favorably upon a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to open public comment moved by Counselor McMaster, second by Counselor Jamaladeen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Sannella.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay. Counselor Gregoritis.
Yes.
Is it for the members of the committee?
I'm sorry. You're ready. Yeah. Yep, Counselor Jamaladeen.
Think we lost her.
I just unmuted you. No, she's there. I just unmuted you. Counselor Jamaladeen, can you hear us? I think our bandwidth is low. Yeah. Okay, Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt. Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Or yes and one pending.
Perfect. The floor is now open for public comment. If anyone who is wishing to speak for the public comment portion, not the nominees for tonight's agenda, but any member of the public would speak on any...
Yeah.
...agenda, please raise your hand.
You can digitally raise your hand for members in the attendee list. There's nobody raising their hand.
Okay. Seeing none, would favorably have had a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
Okay.
Motion to close public comment made by Counselor Migliorelli and second by Counselor McMaster. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Mute.
You're muted, Kristin.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt. Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chair Echols.
Yes.
Or yes.
Five yes. I don't know if you heard me, Kristin.
I did not. Counselor Echols, you are, Chairman Echols, you're, okay. Can you hear us, Jack? Okay.
So the first word on tonight's agenda is Order 2020-81, appointment of Karen Grant Blackburn, 15 Lodge Ave., to the Melrose Commission on Women for three-year terms said to expire on the last day of February 2023. At this time, I would look favorably upon a motion to suspend the rules to hear from the nominee and members of the administration.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Well, second.
To suspend the rules made by Counselor McMaster, second by Vice Chair Jamaladeen. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chair Echols.
Yes.
Five yes.
So it looks like we have Mayor Broder and Karen Grant Blackburn with us tonight. So whoever would like to lead out first?
I think that, I think that would be me. Karen, turn on your camera if you can when you get a chance. So I am, I am very pleased to recommend Karen Grant Blackburn for your consideration to serve on the Melrose Commission on Women. As you all know, this is a commission that got off the ground several years ago under the leadership of then Alderwoman Jennifer Lemberman. And it is a commission that has served the city well since it was, since it was started. I regret that I didn't bring this nomination forward earlier because I know that Karen has spent probably over the past year or so being involved in the day-to-day work of the commission and is anxious to take a more formal role. She certainly has a career. She managed to graduate from BU, something that I did not manage to do. I had to move on from BU. But in addition to that academic success, she has done some work in politics, but also extensive work in leadership of nonprofits that are designed to engage the community. And that is, and she's done that in prior roles here in Melrose, particularly with the Melrose Ed Foundation. And I think she's going to be a terrific addition, bringing that experience to the Melrose Commission on Women. So I appreciate your consideration and urge unanimous support for her nomination and her service. Thank you.
Awesome. Karen, would you like to say a few words?
I'm gonna unmute you, Karen.
Sure. Oh, great. So I don't have the power to do that. I like not having to be in charge of anything right now. Thank you, Mayor Broder, and thank you, Chair Echols, and thank you to the rest of the committee. As the mayor shared, not quite a full year, but I have attended, as a non-voting member, a handful of commission meetings since the summer. And one of the reasons I was really drawn to this opportunity was because of my passion really for women and children. And so when I first learned of a vacancy at the commission, I thought, wow, wouldn't that be great to have a role in creating some programming that could not only support and help to raise up some of the accomplishments and find solutions for some of the challenges that women and girls are facing in our community, but wouldn't it be a great opportunity to be a connector intergenerationally? I shared this with Chair Echols on Friday when he wanted to make sure I knew about all the tech aspects of what would be happening tonight. And I was really excited, you know, first, as a mom of two daughters, I'm quite passionate in my fierceness for them to be able to navigate a world that's deserving of them. And so when I think about the opportunity with the council, I think not only about my girls and their friends and the girls who are, you know, their ages, but also, you know, what are we doing to support women who are now stay-at-home moms, who used to be rock stars professionally and right now with their kids in school? They're just sort of like, what do I do with myself now? Then I think about women who are aged out of the workforce, who have tons of experience and expertise that they'd love to share. How are we tapping into what they have to offer and connecting them to the young women and girls in our community and to some of these stay-at-home moms who are trying to figure out, figure out how to either re-enter the workforce or to do something else that's going to make them feel productive and worthwhile? So I just think there's tons of opportunities with the commission, and I'd be honored to serve.
Counselor McMaster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Blackburn. Thank you for being here. And Ms. Blackburn, thank you for your, your interest in serving the City of Melrose. I'm always pleased when I see a fellow Ward Five resident step up and take an interest in serving on any of our commissions and boards. I'm familiar with some of your professional work and your reputation. You know, I've also looked at your resume, which is very impressive. I'm wondering, Ms. Blackburn, if you could talk a little bit about how you see some of your professional experience at Cradle for Crayons and formerly at the Office of the Child Advocate being transferable to the Women's Commission?
Sure. When I think about my time at Cradles to Crayons right now, the commission is very similar to a nonprofit organization. Right now, one of the pieces of work that I'm leading at Cradles to Crayons is a strategic planning process so that we can figure out how we can deploy what we do to serve more kids nationally. So right now, across the country, there are roughly 22 million children who are at risk for clothing insecurity, meaning that these are kids who don't have the basic necessities that they need to be successful in life, all the things that many of our kids take for granted, sadly. And as part of that process of figuring out how an organization with brick and mortar in three cities is able to scale nationally, it's really taking the best of what we do, figuring out how to leverage technology to do more of it, figuring out how we can take some risk, be innovative, and how we then put together an operational plan, implementation plan to operationalize that and put it against a timetable with milestones and benchmarks and everything to be poised for success. When I think about the Women's Commission, I think it's largely the same. So the Women's Commission's been in startup mode for the past few years. There's been some turnover in the chair role, and I think as a group, they're still trying to figure out their footing. They're still trying to figure out exactly who they need to be in Melrose and what they really need to offer. So I look at, I look at it as an opportunity to bring a strategic lens to the work, making sure that it's one thing to have really wonderful, engaging events and programming, but how is it fitting into helping us achieve our end goal? So how are we helping women and girls in the City of Melrose? How are we advancing the cause? How are we educating people, not only with the good that's happening, but also educating on things that need to be better? And so for me, it's, it's taking what's been done for the last few years and building on that foundation and helping to develop a strategy so that there's a path forward for the commission.
Thank you for that, that answer. And one of the things that I'm very impressed with is the fact that you've been attending the meetings already. So you have a sense of what goes into participating on a commission, the ideas that have been presented and are being discussed. And perhaps most importantly, is you know the skill set of those who, you know, who are currently on the commission. So I'm wondering, are there any particular areas of interest or any skills that you have that you think will complement good work being done by the commissioners who are, who are currently serving the city?
It's a great question. At the heart, I'm a planner. And from the meetings that I've attended, there are lots of amazing ideas of things that we'd like to do. And I would like to be able to bring my planning skills to help weave them together into a roadmap that, a roadmap that makes sense so that at any point in time, anyone on the commission knows exactly what we're doing today, what we need to be doing next week, and what we should be doing a year from now, and how it all works to meet our end goal.
Great. Thank you. I look forward to supporting your nomination this evening. And Mayor Broder, I'd like to thank you for advancing Ms. Blackburn's name. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Gregoritis.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Broder, and thank you, Ms. Blackburn, for being here. I don't have a question. I just wanted to state for the record that I've had the distinct pleasure of knowing you personally and having an opportunity to serve with you on the Winthrop PTO and also on the board of the Melrose Education Foundation. I know firsthand that you are a rock star. I am so excited for what you're going to bring to this commission, and I just want to thank you for stepping up to continue to serve your community.
Thank you. That's very sweet of you. Thank you.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Blackburn, for being here tonight. I have also known you for a while, but looking at your resume is quite impressive. So I feel really lucky that we're going to have someone with your depth and breadth of knowledge, the nonprofit world, public service, and in women's issues, joining the commission. I was wondering, you know, as a former commission member on the Human Rights Commission myself, I think one of the areas we struggle with is getting the community engaged, you know, not hearing from the same people. And so just wondering, given your experience in, in doing that, what kind of ideas might you have for the Women's Commission?
It's, it's a great question, and it's something, thankfully, that the commission as a whole is trying to tackle. We did an event around the Harvard EdX display of artifacts, and there was a lot of work put into organizing this event. And it was a lovely event, but there were probably a dozen people there. And really, what we've come to realize is that we're talking to the same handful of people. We haven't, if you were to ask those people in Melrose, they have no idea that there's a Women's Commission. And then the ones who do know there's a Women's Commission, they couldn't tell you what the mandate is and what its purpose is. And so one of the things that we're hoping to tackle is reaching out to a whole slew of individuals to educate them on the fact that there is a Women's Commission and what the mandate is and how they can get involved. So in some ways, imagine just very basic grassroots. How do we reach out to the masses? How do we tout our successes? How do we just share information about what it is that we're doing? And it's realizing that we can't just leverage traditional channels. We, you know, there's really no point to just putting things on Facebook if it's closed to just the people who follow the commission on Facebook. So how are we leveraging events that are open to all to help get that message out? So we're really trying to figure out how do we tap into existing structures to broaden our reach?
Great. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
I just wanted to echo some of my colleague's sentiments, and thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for nominating Ms. Blackburn, and thank you for being here tonight. And going forward, I find your resume to be beyond impressive and echo how lucky we are to have you working on the Women's Commission. So thank you. You have my full support.
Thank you very much.
Motion to recommend for passage, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion.
Hi, second.
Motion to recommend for passage coming from Counselor McMaster, second by Vice Chair Jamaladeen. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? You're muted, Kristin.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chair Echols.
Yes.
Five yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Blackburn. You'll be voted on later at the full council, but you don't need to stay for that.
Thank you all so much. I really hope to have the opportunity to serve and to do some good in the city. So thank you.
Thank you. You.
All right. I'm gonna bring in the next candidate.
Awesome. So the next item on our agenda is Order 2020-82, appointment of Carol M. Lisitra, 308 East Foster Street, to the Board of Health for a three-year term. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2023. It looks like we have still the mayor and Ms. Lisitra with us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to bring forward an outstanding nominee. You may think to yourself, in the current state of affairs, who would possibly want to sign up for a, for a tour of duty on the, on the Board of Health? But I will say this, we got a tremendous amount of interest in this both before and as the COVID epidemic started to come on the radar and really got an outstanding cross-section of candidates. The reason why I'm bringing forward Ms. Lisitra is to fill a role in terms of mental health. So we have, as you all know, we have a doctor and a nurse on the commission. And going for, in this present time and going forward, we all know how much an important part of our work is going to be making sure that both physical and mental health is a part of what we do in terms of meeting community needs. We've talked about it before COVID in the context of general services and also around anxiety throughout our school system and how to, how to deal with that. In particular, some of the, there, there will be ongoing challenges, non-COVID related that we still have to keep our eye on. And I am confident that Ms. Lisitra will do that. She has a tremendously interesting background in that she was a professional banker or VP at, I want to say Bay Bank before she changed careers and went into mental health and counseling. And in particular, I want to draw your attention to her time at the Fenway Community Health Center, which is a tremendous place that really deals with a lot of challenges with safety net and providing a full spectrum of services to make sure that people are getting, getting what they need, mental health being an important part of that. So I am delighted to bring forward her nomination and urge her swift confirmation so she can be a commissioner at Wednesday night's Board of Health meeting. Thanks.
Carol, can you hear us?
I can. I'm also on video. Can you see me or am I not connected?
You're, you're not visible. Do you have a little, there should be a bunch of buttons at the bottom of your screen, the second one, if you're accessing your laptop, is a video.
Okay. It says you can't connect to your webcam.
Okay.
I might, if you can give me one second, I might have just need to close out of another app. Sorry about that. Okay. Okay. Should be okay in a second. I'm not technologically savvy, but I do promise you that. Hi. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mayor Broder and Chair Echols. And as you said, I, it's interesting that this is all happening at such a time. I was interested in the board prior to the coronavirus upsetting our lives, but it felt even more urgent, obviously, over these past several weeks. So yes, as the mayor said, I do have an interesting background in that I didn't start out in mental health, although my role in the banking world was really one of client relations. And over my almost 20-year tenure there, I actually just came to understand that I, what I really liked about banking wasn't banking, but it was about the people and working as part of a team, part of a community. We actually provided services to municipalities throughout the state, in particular their retirement systems. So I often had the charge of meeting with the boards or with the administrative staff and really making relationships the center of, of what work we did with them. So I found at that time that you can really accomplish a lot by establishing good relationships. And after my own health crisis in the mid-'90s, I decided to go back to grad school. I was at a work with the bank for a while, and I just realized that I wanted to focus more of my energy on the people aspect and on giving back to the healthcare community because it helped me greatly through my struggles. So I did that, and as the mayor said, I worked with, at a community health center for several years. When I first became a counselor, I worked in the medical social work department, even though I'm not technically a social worker, but the role really suited me. And we worked primarily with AIDS patients, although it was a community health center, and we did see, you know, many, a broader population, including addictions and whatnot. But my role was really to sort of not only case manage these cases, but to bring the teams together that were needed to really address all of the issues, including, you know, the medical needs, the community needs, and mental health needs as well. So when this opportunity came along, I kind of felt that I had a lot of, of the right qualifications to sort of join a community effort to, you know, again, work as part of a team and bring together some of these things that I had, have seen and worked on in the past. I've been in private practice since about 2005. I work, I currently have a practice here in Melrose. And while I love working with my individual and family clients, I do, really do miss being part of an organization, a larger organization, and working with a multidisciplinary team. So I think that that's something that we'll really enjoy, given the opportunity, and that'll really bring a lot to that aspect of the work. So thank you for your consideration, and that's pretty much my shtick.
Thank you. President Gregoritis.
Thank you. As the counselor for Ward Six, I'm thrilled to have you here this evening and to support your nomination. And I think having someone with your depth and breadth of mental health services is going to be a critical addition to the Board of Health. I think the mental health effects from this crisis are going to be long-reaching in a way that none of us have ever experienced, and I'm just very grateful to you for offering your time and talent to such a crucial commission here in the city. So thank you.
Vice Chair Jamaladeen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Ms. Lisitra, for stepping up, and I really appreciate everything you did, and I'm impressed with the background as well. What is the most important thing that you feel that the community and our city should focus on, especially after this pandemic, knowing that a lot of individuals will be suffering from PTSD, from a lot of mental health issues?
Yeah. I think one of the things I'm seeing daily, not only in our own family lives, but in the people I work with, is it sounds very simple, but it's really quite challenging, just the aspect of readjusting. Almost every day since this has come about in our lives, we are readjusting to the smallest things and to the biggest things. Everything we do, the, the way we spend our days, the way we teach our children. And I'm finding that the longer this goes on, the level of anxiety is increasing. It's very difficult to live in a time where there's so much uncertainty. I think we all know that, but I think we don't know, as you've intimated, the long-reaching results of such an adjustment. So what I try to do with the people I'm working with currently is to really help them put in, into, get into perspective. It's not about quickly figuring out what we have to do today to get through the day, although that is important. I think this will be something that we will slowly have to continuously reassess as we start to move back toward being, again, involved in our work outside the home, in our community, in the services our community brings. So I think it is yet to be known what that will be, but as you said, PTSD, anxiety, depression, how do people reconnect when we're supposed to not be connecting? So those are some of the, of my areas of interest that I think will be very important to address together with the board and the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McMaster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Lisitra. Appreciate you being here and thank you for your willingness to serve. You mentioned some HIV/AIDS-related work. Was that clinical work that you did when you were in graduate school?
No, that was after graduate school. I did an internship at Fenway for a year, but then I was hired there. So I worked there for, I believe it was about seven years. So my clinical work was counseling and was case management related. I also ran some groups, support groups, and therapy groups for patients. Again, not just HIV and AIDS, although that was primarily my caseload, but general population and other medical issues that people had.
And what was the area of study that you focused on in graduate school? And was your, was there a clinical placement or a thesis that gives us some sense of your, your interest beyond some of the things that you've already talked about?
Yeah. The other internship I did was, was at a cancer support group establishment rather that offered support groups to folks living with cancer. So I, my interest in graduate school was working with people who had terminal illness. So I, I majored in a counseling, straight individual counseling. Can't think of the word I'm looking for, but in any event, it was a clinical mental health and individual counseling. They offered, I went to Leslie University for that degree, earned a master's. We didn't do a thesis or a research project at that time. It was mostly the actual internship experience that we focused on. I also worked at Simmons College for a part of my internship year doing college counseling. So I worked again in a really multidisciplinary type of a setting, but focused on individual work with students at the time.
Thank you. And one of the things that Fenway Community Health is, is known for is its work with the LGBTQ community. I'm wondering whether or not you've had an opportunity to work at all at Fenway Health with that community? And then based on some of the, the schoolwork that you just referenced, if you have really any ideas or thoughts on ways that the, the Health, Board of Health might be able to work collaboratively with some other departments in terms of raising awareness with the, you know, with the public or in terms of prevention?
With the LGBTQ community.
Especially.
Yes. Well, I'm a lesbian and we have a child and we, you know, we are part of this community. And when we moved to Melrose years ago, not knowing it, I was very surprised and encouraged by the rich community there already is here in Melrose. So we've been involved, I've been involved personally in some of those efforts, you know, Pride Month and whatnot, but nothing specific to helping in the mental health area. But of course, that would be an area of interest of mine. I do, my caseload, in fact, includes quite a bit of both families and individuals in the community, both in Melrose and outside, but in the gay community. So I don't have anything in particular off the top of my head that I've been thinking about. I've been really more focused on the medical aspect, but certainly open to exploring those concerns.
Thank you. I think, you know, historically, the, the Board of Health has, by virtue of what it does, is very reactive to the, what may be happening at a particular time in which it needs to invest itself. And there may be opportunities for us to identify some important public health-related issues.
Absolutely.
Work across other city departments and, you know, and along with the mayor to maybe raise some awareness at, at an early point before an issue may, you know, spiral to a point where we have to intervene. You mentioned your multidisciplinary work, which I think is, is very impressive. One of the things about the field of public health, as you know, is it's all-encompassing, it's very broad. So whether, you know, a virus like COVID-19, or an issue like domestic violence, misuse, biohazard, or waste spills, or food safety in restaurants, any number of issues. And certainly, we can never expect anyone to, one person to be an expert in all of those issues. But knowing that at any particular meeting, you might be dealing with an issue with which you maybe don't have a level of expertise, how would you look to approach issues that maybe are not within your comfort level and maybe, you know, something new for you?
Yeah. Well, I'm really glad you brought that question up because that was one of my, you know, sort of going into this, I realized, while I do have a range of experience and, you know, I'm a little bit on the older side, so I have life experience as well. I certainly don't know everything about how a city functions, how a city operates, or the needs of its community. But again, that's an area for me that kind of is, I welcome that. I'm curious. I want to know about what people want, need. That's how I approach my work, actually. You know, I don't assume that I know what somebody's needs are or even what they're feeling without really giving them a chance to explore and explain that together. So that's what I loved about working as part of a team, is that everybody brings something and you really can accomplish a lot. So I would approach that just in the same way. I would be interested in learning, being open to different opinions and thoughts about things, and really being able to sort of put that all in the mix and come to an understanding through that. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you very much. And I look forward to supporting your nomination this evening.
Thank you very much.
Any other voting or non-voting members for the first time? Well, I, I am excited to support your nomination. We spoke on the phone briefly on Friday. So at this time, I'd, I'm not sure she's on the floor.
Motion to recommend for passage.
Second.
Motion to recommend for passage came from Council McNutt, seconded by Councilor Migliorelli. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chair Echols.
Yes.
Five yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Lusitra. This will be voted on later tonight at the full council meeting.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next and last item on tonight's agenda is Order 2020-80, reappointment of Daniel O'Neill, 340 Main Street, number 703, to the Cemetery Commission for a three-year term set to expire on the last day of February 2023. Mayor Broder, do you have some words to add to that?
Some brief comments. So y'all probably know Chief O'Neill, he's a Melrose police officer for virtually his entire professional career, ended up as acting chief when, before we transitioned over to a permanent chief, and has always been a terrific leader in the community, always very engaged. He, this is a reappointment. He is currently serving as chair, has done an outstanding, outstanding job. And as personally communicated to me, his willingness to serve another term and his desire to. I think if you check in with your colleague, Counselor Garapay, who served on the Cemetery Commission before his service on the council, in case you didn't know about that. And he, I know, I don't want to speak for him, but I know he very much enjoyed his service with the chief. And should you, because this is a reappointment, it's not before you today, he has expressed to me that he is happy to appear. Should you desire to have a dialogue with him, but does look forward to his another term of service. And thank you for your consideration.
I'd like to motion for passage.
I have a motion, motion to recommend for passage from Counselor Migliorelli, seconded by Counselor McNutt. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chair Echols.
Yes.
Five yes.
That concludes all items on tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Counselor McNutt, seconded by Vice Chair Jamaladeen. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Chair Echols.
Yes.
Five yes.
This meeting's adjourned.
I'm going to shut up the recording and we will begin backup at 7:45.
Okay, good evening. The, it is 7:45 PM on Monday, May 4, and the meeting of the Melrose City Council is called to order. I am President Gregoritis. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible. After the meeting, on the City of Melrose website and on mmtv.org, the public can find online access instructions to view this meeting at cityofmelrose.org/remote-meetings. I would like to remind my fellow counselors to please be on mute when not speaking. And also, while we're in this remote meeting format, all votes will be a roll call vote. And so with that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Here.
Counselor Echols.
Here.
Counselor Garapay.
Here.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Here.
Counselor McMaster.
Here.
Counselor McNutt.
Here.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Here.
Counselor Stewart.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Tremontozzi.
Here.
President Gregoritis.
Here.
Eleven present.
Okay, with eleven present, we have the necessary quorum, and the council will proceed. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding minutes approval for the April 27 meeting.
Madam President, motion to approve April 27 meeting minutes without reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor Jamaladeen, to approve the minutes from the April 27 meeting. Is there any discussion? Hey, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.
Echols.
Yes.
Garapay.
Yes.
Jamaladeen.
Yes.
McMaster.
Yes.
McNutt.
Yes.
Migliorelli.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Tremontozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes, and the motion carries. At this time, we will move into the public comment portion of our meeting. This is the time in which any member of the public wishing to speak to any, any item on our agenda, they do so. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak in public comment?
I did not receive any notification of anyone interested in speaking.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open public comment in case there's anyone watching who wishes to participate.
Motion to open public comment.
We have a motion to open public comment by Counselor Stewart, seconded by Counselor Echols. Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.
Echols.
Yes.
Garapay.
Yes.
Jamaladeen. McMaster.
Yes.
McNutt.
Yes.
Migliorelli.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Thomas. Tremontozzi.
Yes.
Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, we are now open for public comment. If there's anyone viewing this as a participant who wishes to speak, you can digitally raise your hand, and we will pull you forward.
Motion to close public comment.
We have a motion to close public comment by Counselor Stewart, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.
Echols.
Yes.
Garapay.
Yes.
Jamaladeen.
Yes.
McMaster.
Yes.
McNutt.
Yes.
Migliorelli.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Tremontozzi.
Yes.
Gregoritis.
Yes.
Anemous.
Okay, so public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk of Committees, can you please read the communications from the mayor and other city officials? Madam Clerk of Committees, you're on mute.
Order 2020-86, thank you. Reappointment of Michael Stankovich, 9 Harding Street, to the Human Rights Commission for a second full term. Said term to expire on the last day of February 2023.
This order will be referred to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee. Madam Clerk of Committees, can you please read any new business?
Order 2020-85, a resolution honoring the Melrose chapter of the '84 movement, fighting youth tobacco use in Massachusetts.
This order will be referred to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee. Sorry, I lost my paper. Madam Clerk of Committees, do we have any orders out of order?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have any orders from committee?
Yes, Madam Clerk, excuse me, Madam President. I'd like to remove Order Number 2020-78, appropriation from the Special Education Stabilization Fund and the amount of $450,000 to the school department.
Okay, so we have, and this came with a recommendation for passage?
That is correct.
Do we have a motion on the table?
That is my motion.
Okay, sorry, do we have a second? So we have a motion on the table from Counselor Sinella regarding Order 2020-78 with a recommendation for passage, seconded by Counselor Echols. Is there any discussion? Counselor McMaster.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I did want to just follow up on our discussion at the last meeting where Superintendent Tamar appeared before us. There was some information that I had requested after the meeting, some of which I did receive, not all of it. But one of the questions, you may recall, that I asked was whether or not, or not whether or not, but what, what is the balance of the revolving fund? Clearly, we have to fund special education. We not only have a legal, legally, we have to do so. We also have a moral responsibility to do so. So that's really not an issue. The issue is whether or not it should come out of the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, which, as everyone knows, is a rainy day fund. And that, I think, is really based on what, if anything, is in the revolving fund. Because we did hear the superintendent explain to us that the circuit breaker money that we received to offset the cost of special education from the state goes into that revolving fund. The information I received from the school department through Mr. Delarussue is that there's $6 of circuit breaker money. I'm assuming the circuit breaker fund is what they're referencing as it relates to my question, although I specifically asked for the revolving fund. However, based on that $6 balance and the, really the overarching point of whether or not there was existing money, circuit breaker monies that could be applied before we tapped into the rainy, the rainy day fund, I think that, that concern has, has at least been addressed. So at this point, I, I am willing to vote favorably for the transfer. I know there's a motion on the table, but after this, I would just, at that time, ask for the floor just to make a motion to attach the documents that, the document received in my initial email. But I realize, Madam President, we do have a motion on the floor right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McMaster. And we will take up your motion after we dispose of the one current, currently before us. Is there any other discussion on the motion currently before us? Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, I think she said Sinella.
Oh, you're on mute.
On your lips.
Just to clarify, this is just removed from committee, the order, correct? Yes, Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tremontozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes. So the order has been removed from committee, and now I believe we have a motion by Counselor McMaster to attach his correspondence to the record.
Second.
Yes, Madam President. If I could, for the record, attach the email sent to the administration through Chair Sinella and through Ms. Foote, dated April 30, as well as the memo that is dated today, May 4, from Mr. Delarussue to the order. I would make that motion at this time.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Counselor McMaster to attach a memo and an email to the order, seconded by Counselor Echols. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.
Echols.
Yes.
Garapay.
Yes.
Jamaladeen.
Yes.
McMaster.
Yes.
McNutt.
Yes.
Migliorelli.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Tremontozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes. So the motion carries. Thank you. And at this time, I would entertain a motion for passage.
Motion for passage.
Seconded.
We have a motion, motion for passage by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor McNutt. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNutt.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tremontozzi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
President.
Is that, sorry, was that 11 yes? I was waiting.
Yeah, because I didn't hear your guess. Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes. Yes, 11 yes. Okay, 11 yes, the motion carries. Do we have any other orders from committee?
Madam President, I'd like to remove Order Number 2020-64, which is a request for information regarding previous and any forthcoming processes for payments in lieu of taxes of taxes, other annual financial arrangements with Melrose Wakefield Hospital.
Okay, we have a motion to remove Order 2020-64 from committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
So motion by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. Is there any discussion? Hey, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.
Echols.
Yes.
Garapay.
Yes.
Jamaladeen.
Yes.
McMaster.
Yes.
McNott.
Yes.
Migliorelli.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Tremontosi.
Yes.
Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Eleven yes, okay, the order is removed from committee.
Madam President, at this time, this order comes from appropriations with a recommended to place on file.
Okay, so we have a motion to place on file?
Second.
So we have a motion to place on file by Counselor Sinella, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli. Do we have any discussion? Hey, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tremontosi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes, so the motion carries. I believe that's everything from appropriations. Counselor Echols?
Thank you, Madam President. I have before us an order, Order 2020-81, appointment of Karen Grant Blackburn, 15 Lodge Ave, the Melrose Commission on Women for three-year terms set to expire on the last day of February 2023. And I'm pretty bored of motion to pull that up from committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to remove Order 2020-81 from committee made by Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor McMaster. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.
Echols.
Yes.
Garapay.
Yes.
Jamaladeen. McMaster.
Yes.
McNott.
Yes.
Migliorelli.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Tremontosi.
Yes.
Gregoritis.
Yes.
Ten yes.
Okay, ten yes, so the order is before us.
I'm sorry, I'm, I, I had problem with, technical problem. I, yes.
Okay, good.
Passage.
Okay, we have a motion for passage by Counselor McMaster, seconded by Counselor Echols. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tremontosi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes, and the motion carries.
Up next, from the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee, we have Order 2020-82, appointment of Carol Ann Lucitra, 308 West East Foster Street, the word of health for a three-year term set to expire on the last day of February 2023. This come forward, comes forward with a recommendation for passage.
So we have a motion to remove this from committee? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor Migliorelli, to remove Order 2020-82 from committee. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.
Echols.
Yes.
Garapay.
Yes.
Jamaladeen.
Yes.
McMaster.
Yes.
McNott.
Yes.
Migliorelli.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Tremontosi.
Yes.
Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, so the motion carries, the order is before you.
Motion for passage.
Okay, we have a motion for passage by Counselor Echols. Seconded by Counselor Sinella. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Sinella.
Yes.
Counselor Echols.
Yes.
Counselor Garapay.
Yes.
Counselor Jamaladeen.
Yes.
Counselor McMaster.
Yes.
Counselor McNott.
Yes.
Counselor Migliorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Stewart.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Tremontosi.
Yes.
President Gregoritis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, eleven yes, the motion carries. Counselor Echols, I believe you have one more?
One more, yeah. Order 2020-80, reappointment of Daniel O'Neal, 340 Main Street, number 703, the Cemetery Commission for three-year terms set to expire on the last day of February 2023. Motion to pull up from committee.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to pull Order 2020-80 from committee by Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor McNott. Is there any discussion? Hey, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sinella.
Yes.